Administration's ban on transgender troops in the United States military can remain in place while appeals work their way through the system. So what kind of message does that send to transgender Americans, including the ones living here in Yamhill County? I have one more quick story for you. I turned eighteen in March of 2003, seven days before the United States invaded Iraq. In my rural hometown, there was a lot of talk about patriotism, military service, and a potential draft. I was well aware of the militaries don't ask, don't tell policy that was in place at that time, and I had heard the stories of men my age who wanted to fight for their country, but that were then outed, shamed, and ultimately discharged. I cannot describe to you the internal conflict a teenager goes through when they're hiding their sexuality, and the government has the power to out them and effectively ruin their life. But I lived that reality and was terrified that a draft might happen and that my life might be ruined. And now, with the blessing of the highest level of our government, our society is doing the exact same thing to a different group of people, using the same exact excuses that were previously used against people like me. From my point of view, the point of this type of proclamation is optics. This is for those citizens of our county who are quietly watching for signals from their elected leaders that they are welcome in this community, that the community leaders will seek out the stories of different groups of people with open ears and minds. Instead of saying we're already compassionate, leaders should say, "We're here to listen and learn so that we may better serve." The optics of this proclamation says exactly that. It would be incredibly powerful for the three of you to vote unanimously in support of this proclamation. Young eyes are really watching. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Chris. I currently do not have any more comment cards, so what we will do is we will, for this agenda item, so we will turn it around for discussion on the inclusivity proclamation. And I'll start with you, Commissioner Kula.
Uh, Mr. Chair, I think we need a motion.
Yes, I was gonna make a motion. I make a motion to pass and approve the original draft that was given to us last week with the, or on Tuesday with the changes that county council made. That's the motion.
Okay.
And now we go to discussion, at least.
Yeah, we have a motion solved there. I'll turn it over to you.
Can you, Commissioner Kula, can you give me the, the changes, the, should I say, the designations of people you'd like to see us remove?
Um, I believe that, I actually don't have the, the original on there. It's, it's the language that you asked to have included.
Can you, can you tell me the list of the people you'd like to have us remove from that proclamation, Commissioner?
Yeah, you know, I thought it would be easier to provide us with just the, the original that we had, but, but what I would, what I would welcome then, since there are, there are redundancies in the list that you gave us, my chief concern is with including what is, it's either unborn or preborn. Do you recall the-
It, it, it's the preborn. If you'd like, I could read the list that Commissioner Sterrett proposed on Tuesday.
So I'm just asking if you would tell me which of those groups of people you'd like us to remove from the proclamation? And Christian has that list, so would you-
Yeah.
-give that to Commissioner Kula?
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm just trying to pull it up.
That's the revised-
Okay, thank you.
So the, the recommendation would be to remove the following people from, or the following groups of people from this proclamation? Okay, go ahead. I just wanna make a-
There you go. So I'd like to make a motion to approve the inclusivity proclamation as written, removing the language with reference to preborn. And that's, there you go.
We have, we have a motion on the table already, so if you'd like to withdraw your previous motion and make a new motion with the consent of the board, I think that's fine. Are you, are you, is the board okay with-
Thank you for-
Commissioner Kula withdrawing his prior motion and making a revised motion?
So, I'm a little confused because you said that you wanted the original language, which would include removal of groups like seniors-
Oh, do you wanna read them?
No, would you read the groups you'd like to have removed?
You started too, so I thought maybe you would want to.
Who, who do you would want removed from that list?
Would you like me to make a new motion?
Uh, well, with this, and yeah, but I think you need to state, as far as Mary said in the motion, the, as part of your new motion, your revised motion-
Yeah.
Is, make, make, in your motion, make a statement of the people, the people that you'd like removed-
Okay.
-from the, from the list.
Okay, so then the second one. So I rescind both motions and make a new one. That is, I move to approve the inclusivity proclamation with the change of removing the lang, the word "preborn."
But all the others can stay?
That's correct.
Okay, so-
But by my, sorry?
Why, are they already covered in-
Excuse me, excuse me.
This is time for Commission deliberation, so go ahead.
Um, I just wanna be clear. So the motion now, Commissioner Kula, is to remove preborn, unborn from the proclamation?
That's correct. I, I think I only see preborn though.
Okay, preborn, okay.
And that's the motion, yes.
Okay, so we have a motion on the table?
Yeah, and Mr. Chair, at some point, I don't know if now's the appropriate time, but typically, historically, we've read these into the record.
Right.
I think, given the conversation about which proclamation is going to move forward, at some point before the board votes, you should read the one that the board is considering back into the record again for-
Okay, I'll do-
Yeah, I don't think we've actually read it in yet.
I'm not sure, I'm not sure that we've-
So let, before I, before I read that, then we'll go ahead and have additional discussions.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. There were some comments made during a comment on this, that we suggested that we spend some time caring for pregnant women and women who might need food and housing during pregnancy. I can tell you that the county, and I'm sure, Commissioner, you're learning this, that Health and Human Services, through a variety of programs, Cocoon, Babies First, Nurse Partner, Family Partnership, spend an awful lot of time with children with special medical needs, pregnant moms, families, and first-time parents. And it begins prenatally and can last all the way through '21. So we have a very robust, and I believe exemplary, program in this county, which provides for women before, during, and after pregnancy. I found it interesting that of all of the groups that I suggested we include in this proclamation, addicts, criminals, that it was babies that seemed to evoke such ire from people who said, "Preborn, they're not babies, they're, they cannot be included in this." And I, and I would say that as, just our Health and Human Services programs do advocate for the unborn, the preborn, that's what we do in, in a number of our different programs. So I would just say that we do support pregnant moms and babies, and we expend an awful lot of time and resources. They are constituents. They are members of our community, and they are constituents, and there is no group that we should not be advocating for. So I believe that it's important for us to take a look at the people we serve as constituents who come to us for advocacy. And if we are concerned about a variety of other groups, that we add to that the people who are most vulnerable, which are our women and our unborn babies. Adding that to a proclamation does nothing but show the compassion that we're asked to show, not just for some groups, but for others, just for us.
Order, please.
And what we've seen in this room today is a real indication of the contempt for true compassion. So I would, I am opposed to not including that, because we do do it, we do advocate for the unborn in programs that we spend an awful lot of money on.
Okay, I guess my, I guess my comments on this is that regardless of my own personal feeling, I believe that we are here to serve mothers, you know, pregnant mothers, to ensure that if they do have a child, that that child is healthy and they're good, but I, I am against including the word "preborn," "preborn," for number one, because I believe that in this last paragraph where we say that we are gonna follow accordance with all applicable laws, rules, and regulations, even though no matter what my personal feelings is, is, if you look at the laws, that whether we wanna talk about it or not, abortion is permitted under the laws. Might not be moral to a lot of people, maybe, I don't care, but the thing about it is, I think by specifically putting "preborn" in, and then going on to say that, in accordance with applicable laws, rules, and regulations, that, to me, that flies in the face, 'cause there's a law that says we can't control that as, as a nation, I mean, it's, it's certainly legal. So for that case, I cannot support, I like Commissioner Sterrett's comments with some of the other inclusive people, classes, but I cannot approve it with the word "preborn" in, so.
I don't think we're precluded from, I don't think that, that any of the laws that you reference in terms of federal and state protections, I don't think that precludes us from advocating for the unborn, because we do it whenever a woman who comes to us with a pregnancy, wanted, unwanted, comes to us for help, we are, we are advocating through our programs. So I don't think this puts us in any way at odds with, with those.
Commissioner Sterrett, I, I totally agree, and what, I actually, I'd like to think that somebody in the audience, I believe, stole my idea, which is that together with county administrator and county council, we work on what could be a very innovative and forward-thinking pro, proclamation, sometimes they're hard to say, proclamation in the future, and I have some ideas for what I would like to include on that. And it's possible that it could be something that the community can really get behind and feel really comfortable with. But while we're talking about what HHS does in our county, the tremendous work that they do, I wanted to provide some testimony from HHS, which is to say, quote, "My concern is that somehow using the terms unborn children would indicate a policy position that isn't inclusive to our entire community. For instance, if a, an individual or a family has elected to terminate a pregnancy under medical advice or other traumatic situations, such as rape or sexual, sexual abuse, what type of shame or trauma might the board inadvertently create by making such a statement in the proclamation? At HHS, our county employees are working on updating all of our policies and procedures so that they are trauma-informed. Language such as this might not be in line with our trauma-informed goals." And I really appreciated that perspective, since it's one, I'm, I'm not an expert in HHS.
Okay, thank you.
So, thank you.
Thank you, Casey. Anything for you?
No, thank you.
Okay, we have a motion on the, on the table that we accept the proclamation, I'll read it in a minute, with the exclusion of the word "preborn." So that being said, before we take a vote, I'll read the, I'll read the proclamation with that excluded. This is in the matter of a resolution declaring Yamhill County an inclusive community for all persons. It's a resolution number 19-01-24-1. And whereas Yamhill County is and must remain a welcoming, inclusive, and compassionate place for all people, including but not limited to seniors, again, I'm leaving out the word "preborn," seniors, property owners, taxpayers, business owners, farmers, recovering addicts, those who suffer from addictions, the increase in those who, the incarcerated, and those who are reintegrating into the community, people of faith, and those with developmental disabilities, and whereas all people regard us of race, color, national origin, immigration, or refugee status, religion, age, economic status, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, mental, emotional, or physical ability contribute to the general welfare of our community, and whereas promotion of the general welfare of our community is a core value of Yamhill County, and whereas all residents of Yamhill County need to feel safe to contact law enforcement, county and civic city government, or school officials to access critical services, and whereas integration of all residents is a vital concern of Yamhill County, and discrimination is a violation of public policy of Yamhill County and the state of Oregon, and whereas Yamhill County's ongoing prosperity requires inclusion of all available labor, skills, and ideas to grow our economy and expand opportunities for residents, now therefore, it is hereby resolved by the Board of Commissioners of Yamhill County as a statement of our commitment to all members of our community, community the following. Yamhill County is an inclusive county, embraces and celebrates the collective contributions to the prosperity of our county of all persons, including but not limited to striking preborn, seniors, property owners, taxpayers, business owners, farmers, recovering addicts, those who suffer from addictions, the incarcerated, and those who are integrating into the community, people of faith, and those with developmental disabilities. And all Yamhill County residents should be fair, feel free, feel free from fear of discrimination, and Yamhill County strives to ensure that all residents have access to and use of county services in accordance with applicable laws, rules, and regulations, and that such access is not illegally denied, conditioned, or withheld upon a resident's race, color, national origin, immigration, or refugee status, religion, age, economic status, sex, gender identity, sexual orientation, mental, emotional, or physical disability, done this 24th date of January 2019. So I've read the resolutions, and now I'll call for the vote, for the, everyone, if those are in favor of approving Resolution 1901-24-1, minus the references to preborn, signify by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Let the record show that the exclusivity proclamation passed with Commissioners Kula and Commissioner Olson voting in favor and Commissioner Sterrett voting against. Thank you, thank you, everyone.
Thank you, everyone.
Also, also if staff will note on, for the record on that item, that two of the people that testified, Susan Delventhal and Tanya Tompkins, also submitted written, written testimony. Okay, that will take, that will take us to our next item, which is a public hearing. And so this will be a public hearing on docket. If there's gonna be leaves, we'll give, we'll give a couple minutes for those that wanna leave, a minute to get up and get out before we continue.
Thank you for your help with that, legal language. I'm amazed at how you can just, like, pull legal language out of my intentions. I'm still amazed by it. I wanna say, you guys, it's impressive.
That's right.
And with my, um-
Yeah.
But I know, I know how to, like, find stuff to-
I didn't get acknowledged as a solid name, so.
That's good. I feel like it's a powerful thing.
He passed out the email.
Thank you, sorry. I was busy, but I wanted to thank you. Thanks. Do you want, is it okay if I get?
Casey?
Thank you.
Ken? Did you guys get a copy? Were you guys the ones that set these out there? Do you have a copy?
Just received this, I'm not sure we got that, so.
All right. That's what I got from the last two. Really?
Should we recess?
Yeah.
That's why I'm trying to keep going here, 'cause I lose things if they're physical. I never wanted to, when I have fun, but.
Okay, is staff, staff ready? Ready? Okay, I'm gonna go ahead and open item E, which is a public hearing docket, SDR-28-18, An Appeal of the Planning Commission's Approval for Winery and Tasting Room Within an Existing Structure, Converted Horse Barn Arena. On a parcel with at least fifteen acres of vineyard planted on site. The applicant is Sandan LLC, DBA Abbey Road Farm. So with that, I will open the public hearing, and I'll call for extensions by the board. Does anybody on the board need to extend? No extension by board? I'll ask the parties if there's any objections to the jurisdiction of the board to hear this matter before it. Hearing no, hearing no objections, then. Any board member need to announce on the state of the record any substance of any ex parte contact they've had, or any site visits?
No, Mr. Chair.
No? Okay. Then I'll turn it over to the council and our planning department for the reasons required by state, state law, so.
Yes, sir. Oregon law requires that persons who attend a land use hearing must be advised of certain rights and duties before the hearing begins. First, with regard to the standards for approval, state law, ORS 197.763/5, requires that the, we list the applicable substantive criteria that must be met in order for the county to approve the application. The standards will be listed by the county planner, Lance here, in a moment, as part of the staff report. Testimony, arguments, and evidence must be directed towards the standards for approval. Second, the raise it or waive it rule. Under Oregon law, any issue that might be raised in an appeal of the county's decision on this matter must be raised before the record of this hearing is closed. Failure to raise an issue accompanied by statements or evidence sufficient to afford the decision-makers and the parties an opportunity to respond to the issue precludes appeal to the board based on that issue. Third, and this is directed at the applicant, under ORS 197.796, failure of the applicant to raise constitutional or other issues related to the proposed conditions of approval, again, with sufficient specificity to allow the county to respond to that issue, precludes an action for damages in circuit court. And lastly, I should note that this is not the initial evidentiary, and because this was also heard by the planning commission.
Thank you, thank you, Ken. Then what I will do is I will call for staff report.
Yes, sir, Mr. Chair. The applicant's parcel is approximately eighty acres in size. The parcel has access from both Oak Springs Farm Road and Abbey Road. The primary access for the winery and tasting room is from Oak Springs Farm Road. The applicant states that the wine production facility and tasting room will be located in a structure that has been used previously as a horse barn and riding arena. The applicant recently planted approximately twenty acres of vineyard. The property has land use approval for the operation of a four guest room bed and breakfast, approved under dockets C-06-03 and C-19-17. The applicant has recently submitted a request to expand the bed and breakfast up to nine guest rooms, the maximum allowed under the YCZO, and that request is gonna be held, there's a hearing scheduled with the planning commission on February 7. The applicant also has approval for an onsite event center, docket C-02-06 and C-20-17. The adjacent properties are all zoned for exclusive farm use, with EF80 zoned parcels to the northeast and west, and EF40 zoned parcels located in south. The adjacent parcel to the southeast hosts the Trappist Abbey of Our Lady of Guadalupe, and is partially zoned, public assembly institutional. The surrounding parcels range in size from approximately nineteen acres to over nine hundred acres. The land use in the surrounding area include a mix of commercial agricultural uses, including vineyards, wine production, wine tasting rooms, grass seed and hay production, fruit and nut orchards, hops farming, as well as livestock pasturage, amongst a number of other less prevalent farm uses. There are also some properties in the area that appear to be dedicated to timber production. This application must satisfy Section 402 Sub 2 Sub H, 402 Sub 10 Sub I, and 1101 Sub 2 of the Yamhill County zoning ordinance under Oregon revised statutes 215 Sub 452 Sub 1 Sub A.
Okay, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Lance.
That will take into the applicant's case, but before we go through that, I have one card that isn't marked proponent or opponent, I wanna make sure I get it in the right place. So Susan, did Susan Meredith leave?
I believe that she is not here.
She's not here, okay. So that takes care of that. One, and then I had another one that was gonna provide only written testimony, and that's Megan Gores-Gross. She's not here either, and she provided written testimony. Okay, so we'll go ahead and let the appellant present their case. So if you can come forward and sign in, sign in, please.
Yep. Do you mean the applicant?
Applicant.
Applicant?
Applicant or the appellant?
The applicant.
Applicant.
Oh, applicant, the applicant first.
We can't see our order. It was like, oh, where is it there?
Well, I have it here in front of me. I read it wrong, it's right here in front of me. The applicant.
I'm so used to it.
I'm sorry.
Good morning. For the record, my name is Elaine Albridge. I am the applicant's representative and legal counsel. My mailing address is 1300 Southwest Fifth Avenue, Suite 2400, Portland, Oregon 97201. I wanna thank you for the opportunity to present here today. We have with us our team, as well as the applicant's Daniel and Sandra Wilkins in the audience. First, I wanted to present kind of an overview of the property and the existing conditions, and then I'll turn to the planning commission's approval of the applicant's permitted use winery application, and demonstrate through our presentation that the planning commission's approval and the underlying record support the board's affirmation of the planning commission's decision approving the winery subject to conditions. The applicant has worked proactively to respond to neighbor concerns. We have proposed additional conditions and worked with staff in response to the concerns that we've heard to date, and we have taken into consideration with the winery's design both potential visual and compatibility impacts. So with respect to existing conditions, Sandy and Daniel acquired the property in 2017 from Jon Stewart. There's two tax parcels, as staff mentioned, with direct access off of Northeast Spring Road and Northeast Abbey Road. And there's one primary residence on the property that you see on the site plan that I handed out to you, that's referred to as the barrel house. That's in reference to the shape of its roof, not the fact that it doesn't store barrels. There's also a secondary residence on the property, which is referenced as the ranch house, with three sleeping rooms, the ranch rooms, and those are the subject of our bed and breakfast amendment application that's currently pending and awaiting a hearing before the planning commission on February 7. You'll also see on the site plan and the photos that I'm gonna show you, and you also have in your handout, that there's a, you know, big horse barn and arena, there's multiple outbuildings, there's other smaller barns, and silos occupying the property. Farm uses on the property include grass seed and hay production, raising livestock, vineyards, and produce crops. Here's an aerial view of the farm. This is earlier, before the vineyard was planted, and I'll show pictures later on in the presentation that shows the planted vineyard, but I thought this was helpful to illustrate the property and where the existing development is at in relation to the roads and the neighboring properties. Property is really clustered, or the existing development is really clustered it together, and then you'll see, I'll point it out. This is the barrel house, this is the silos, this is a ranch house in here, this is a building that was previously occupied by agricuno, and then you'll see here, this is the area where the existing barn is located, and that, you'll see that we have been doing some deconstruction and repair in, of the barn under an ag exempt permit. The location of the winery building is gonna be in the same location as the horse barn, so we're not changing the, kind of the layout or the, the density of the development on the property. As staff mentioned, there are two, there are existing land use approvals for the property. Those were transferred to the applicant when Sandy and Daniel- that shows the planted vineyard, but I thought this was helpful to illustrate the property and where the existing development is at in relation to the roads and the neighboring properties. Property is really clustered, or the existing development is really clustered together, and then you'll see, I'll point it out. This is the barrel house. This is the silos. This is a ranch house in here. This is a building that was previously occupied by Agravino, and then you'll see here, this is the area where the existing barn is located, and you'll see that we have been doing some deconstruction and repair of the barn under an ag exempt permit. The location of the winery building is going to be in the same location as the horse barn, so we're not changing the, kind of the layout or the density of the development on the As staff mentioned, there are two, there are existing land use approvals for the property. Those were transferred to the applicant when Sandy and Daniel Wilkins acquired the property. The first is the conditional use approval for the bed and breakfast which dates back to 2003. It was originally approved for four sleeping rooms in the modified silos which we reference as the silo rooms. The prior owner constructed and operated five rooms. We don't know what happened there. We have been working with county staff in response to some complaints about the use of the ranch rooms and have, in response, subsequently filed an amended bed and breakfast application to include the ranch rooms in the bed and breakfast CUP approval. And right now, we are temporarily not taking any new reservations while the amendment is pending to ensure ongoing compliance with the CUP. This is an aerial view of the farm showing you the silo rooms, and in the distance you can also see the ranch house and ranch rooms. Another conditional use approval that's on the property is for an event center. This dates back to 2006. Again, this permit transferred when the applicant's acquired the property. It allows one event per day of varying types. It requires a parking attendant if more than fifty people in attendance, and there are other conditions of approval included in that conditional use permit. There were complaints that ongoing activities were exceeding the CUP requirements and privileges. So in response, we worked with Agravino to relocate them off of the property because they had, we're not able to strictly comply with the conditional use permit terms and conditions, so they are now relocating to their new facility.
Is it the Newburg, right?
Yeah.
Elaine?
Yeah.
I almost never do this, but I did want to just add one thing, that when she says that the conditional use permit transferred to the applicant, that's a whole separate application that they went through. We did a whole separate notice. That's why at the top there you'll see two docket numbers, one from 2006 and one from 2017. I want to make that clear. It wasn't just a transfer that they bought it, that they actually made the application, went through it, we did notice and did a staff report and sent notice the decision.
Thank you, that's good to clarify for the record. And that was at the end of 2017. The applicant is continuing to operate under the CUP per the terms and conditions, and we are in ongoing communication with staff regarding events being held and ongoing compliance. So that takes us to what's currently before the board today, which is considering whether the planning commission properly approved applicant's permitted use winery application. So I wanted to kind of walk through what the planning commission approved, the issues that we addressed before the planning commission to provide context and background, which also supports the board's consideration of the appeal that is before you today. So the planning commission approved our applicant's request to convert the horse barn and arena to a winery. I mentioned that the deconstructing and joyce repair is ongoing. The winery includes production space, storage, labs, tasting rooms, bathrooms, utilities, and onsite fire suppression water. You can see the location of the ponds and the tanks on the site plans that I provided to you. It has a planted onsite vineyard, as staff mentioned. You'll see some photos of that in a minute. And also, in the record, there's a traffic impact analysis that was performed by ...
Caroline? Sorry to interrupt you this time.
Sorry. Oh, it's, we didn't reconnect. That's okay. You have the traffic impact analysis that was performed by McKenzie's Transportation Engineers, and that looked at, there we go, that looked at Abbey Road, Cuny Road, and Hendricks Road, and demonstrated that all the roads in the vicinity can accommodate any increase in traffic that would be generated by the winery and the tasting room in peak traffic days. The traffic report also considered the existing trips associated with the current land use approvals that are on the property. You can always follow along to in the handout that I gave you of the printout. So the site plan that you have, it shows two views of the property. One is the overall site plan, and the other is more of a concentrated site plan focusing on the winery location itself and showing kind of the proximity to parking and of the existing structures. It also shows the access points and circulation on the property that were with consideration for making sure that we could accommodate all the parking onsite. So taking to the next slide, if you'll just follow along with me on the hard copy, I wanted to show you some photos of the work that we've done on the site with respect to the vineyards. So this is from fall of 2018. This is the vineyard work just starting, heavy machinery. And then you'll see the vineyard planting, plantings. And then from there, another picture of the vineyard plantings, much better up here, but that's okay, we'll just keep going. So you'll see that the vineyards really do stretch quite a ways. When you saw originally the overhead photo, that this provides like a buffer between the neighboring properties and the existing development on the property. And moving on, you see the planted vineyard. That's just to show that the vines are in and they're working on growing, and another planted vineyard photograph. That takes us, though, to the winery site plan. The slide that shows, on your handout, that shows a visual of the design, the conceptual design and what the building will look like. I thought this was important to illustrate for the board, to demonstrate the profile and kind of the overall compatibility that the building has with the existing development on the property, as well as the kind of overall agricultural character of the area in that it's very much keeping in line with, we have the silo which is, and then also one, you know, kind of the brown roof line, that's similar to the roof line that was associated with the horse barn and arena. And the next slide, you know, shows a different orientation of that same conceptual design. That's showing the kind of covered crush pad with that canopy, and then this little bit of the scale when you see the people. This is a permitted use winery, which means that it is allowed subject to standards in the EFU zone. Those standards are outlined both in the local code and in ORS 215-452. The planning commission approved the winery under your EFU provisions, including the use provision as well as the development standards. It also analyzed and considered our compliance with 215-452, the permitted use winery statute as amended by Senate Bill 841. And we had to analyze the application against the statute directly because the local code has yet to incorporate the amendments that were made by Senate Bill 841. So that's why you see use of both the local code and the state statute in the findings. And then we also address the site design review factors that are outlined in your site design review chapter, factors one through seven. Conditions were adopted to ensure ongoing compliance and minimize potential of impacts. Those conditions, there's sixteen conditions that are, or seventeen conditions that are contained in the planning commission letter decision, and they illustrate the responding to the issues that we heard before the planning commission concerning noise, traffic, water, ensuring that the incidental activities associated with the winery remain under the 25% cap, and ensuring that, you know, any substantial modification to the site design plans are, go back before, for site design review amendment if needed. The planning commission heard considerable testimony and weighed the testimony in making its decision to approve the winery. It heard about the water use and supply on the property, the compatibility with neighboring land, the prior land use grievances from the previous owner, as well as concerns over the pre-existing land use approvals. So those issues were all taken into a consideration in the planning commission's decision to approve the winery. We received the Friends of Yamhill County's appeal and subsequent filings from Yamhill County just as late as today, so I will do my best to kind of respond to those. They are fairly consistent with the themes that Friends raised in the underlying review process before the planning commission. I will note, though, that the appeal has limited the issues raised in the notice of appeal. That appeal notice identified three bases for appeal, in our position, many of which are unrelated to the application itself and may be related to the amended B&amp;B application that's currently impending, or may be related to the concerns about ongoing compliance with the CUP. In particular, I will notice that the notice of intent to appeal did not raise any concerns with the planning commission's findings on the site design review criteria, but then we received a letter just today that did raise those, some concerns about the site design review criteria. So I'm going to address those, but legally, I'm going to argue that those were not properly raised in the appeal. And also, I just wanted to note that the comprehensive plan does not directly apply to this application because the application involves a use that's allowed in the EFU zone subject to standards. It's a different test than the, like a conditional use review where you would have consistency with the comprehensive plans and policies as a part of the decision-making criteria. The sections that the Friends raised in their notice of intent to appeal, 1004, 1012, 1205, and 1406, those relate to the home occupation and bed and breakfast facilities, non-conforming uses, and remedy for unlawful structures, and in our opinion are just not relevant for the board's consideration. So in moving on, the planning commission, as I mentioned, did properly respond to the concerns that were raised before it and acted accordingly when it adopted conditions of approval in response to those concerns to ensure ongoing compliance. Throughout the process, Abbey Road Farm has carried its burden to demonstrate compliance with the applicable county requirements and voluntarily proposed conditions in response to neighboring concerns. So with that, I will close with a request that the board affirm the planning commission's approval of the proposed permitted use winery subject to the conditions that are contained in the planning commission approval letter. We don't believe that any additional, sorry, any additional conditions are warranted in order to respond to the concerns that appellant has raised in its latest notice of intent to appeal. However, we are open to, again, talking about appropriate conditions to respond to concerns. So with that, I'll save a little bit of time for rebuttal unless there are any questions.
Okay, any question, any question from the commission?
Yes, I have a question. Can you address the, no allegation that the applicant failed to meet the zoning ordinance 1101-02 site design?
Yeah, so in the notice of intent to appeal, there was not an alleged error that the applicant failed to meet 1102. So that was not, that was not a code section identified in the notice of intent to appeal.
Okay. And again, I don't know if this is the time to bring it up, but the concern about any kind of procedural or appropriateness of the Friends' information or appeal that you have?
No, I'm just noting for the record that legally, the notice of intent to appeal should specify the alleged errors, and that then the review is limited to those errors alleged in the notice of intent to appeal. So I was pointing out that the notice did not specifically reference the site design review chapter or allege that the planning commission erred in finding consistency with subparts one through seven. But nonetheless, the record and then the presentation that I gave with showing the site plan and the orientation of the development on the site, as well as the conceptual design of the winery, I believe go to those factors, particularly, one of the concerns that we've heard is character, character of the surrounding neighborhood or lands to ensure that the design of the development is consistent. And our position is we believe that the design of the winery structure and the location of the horse barn and arena, it's of a similar size and scale of the structure that was there, as well as you can see in the slide, there's been careful consideration to what the building looks like and its scale in order to kind of blend with the, you know, other agricultural buildings.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions?
I don't have any, Casey?
No.
Okay.
No, thank you.
Thank you, I'll save a few minutes for rebuttal.
Maybe you shouldn't have brought up the site design review.
Okay, so then we'll go ahead and then move forward to testimony in support of the application, and it looks like we have Megan.
Commissioner Chair, did anyone else have presentations to put up on the screen? I just, I have IT here to work on the problem, but if there's no further presentations or use of that.
The board.
Needs physical.
Okay. It doesn't look like it, Ken.
Okay, thanks, Jordan.
Okay, that's written testimony. Let me go through this, see if we have any oral testimony. Okay, that's an opponent, that's written testimony, oral testimony. It doesn't say, but Susan is not here. So it looks like that's an opponent. I don't have any records of anybody who wants to testify orally for the proponent. So that being said, then, is anybody, does anybody do want to testify as part of the proponent's case? Okay, hearing none. We'll move on to the appellant's case, and we'll move to the appellant. And of course, state your name and, you know, you know the drill.
I'm actually waiting on this, it's a bit of a distraction.
Okay, Catherine, that's fine.
I'll just be looking at it rather than you.
My name is Catherine Jernsted. I'm here representing Friends of Yamhill County. My personal residence is at 8156 Northeast Mineral Springs Road in Carlton. Friends of Yamhill County has a post office box where we receive our correspondence. I was interested to hear that there is a date set for the hearing on the bed and breakfast. Haven't seen a letter yet, but I hope I'll see one soon. With regard to our appeal of this, words matter, and interpretations can be all over the board, and we remain very concerned that some of the implications of the language in the staff report and the conditions are not adequately addressing the issue. Friends works to protect the natural resources through the implementation and compliance with land use planning goals, policies, and law that maintain and improve the present and future quality of life in Yamhill County. Excuse me. Technical difficulties with email systems have resulted in you having two different versions of the submitted material. The current, correct one that I would like to see incorporated into the record is dated January 24th rather than the 23rd. Friends Yamhill County acknowledges that since the original application and hearing, grapes have been planted on the property. Although they're years from having cropped and processed and substantially advanced construction, before the permitting process was completed, the criteria for a winery within the scope of YC 402.101I1A appeared to have been met. However, we assert that the review process has to date failed to comprehensively address the impact of the range of activities that the owner plans for the property and the new construction. You know, we continue to approach it as stated in the site design review plan. Characteristics of adjoining and surrounding uses need to be looked at, and it goes on to list other issues, but we would respectfully suggest that focusing only on the activities on the other properties while expressly excluding other uses on the same tax lot does not meet the intent of the review process. Applicants have submitted documents into the record, and it again, today, has, have done so, that speak to their other commercial activities onsite and plans for expansion. The Abbey Road Farm website and promotional material present information that appears to contradict the conditions in the planning hearing approval and the material in the record, specifically that the winery will serve as a new and improved event center, that they will host a variety that they will host a variety of activities, not necess, sorry, not necessarily farm-related.
Sorry, it looked like it was going to fall.
Okay. Got this just in case. So, I would direct your attention to, in the attachments, the information from the Abbey Road website that speaks to, among other things, growth and build out of the previous owner's plans. They continue to advocate for their restaurant, although that has since, I believe, ceased operations. And then on the, okay, then this one, they, on the block party was to celebrate their new winery and flex space officially under construction. They say that they're now building under an ag permit. They represent to their public that this is already approved, done deal. Mr. Friday has reported that he had to intervene to stop them from going forward with the installation of the 12 toilets, as those are not judge typical of a permitted ag building. So we remain concerned that the confidence in compliance, our, or lack of confidence in compliance, is justified by their own statements and material. Words matter. The statement of that the conditions of the event center, which was transferred through the appropriate process, the fall of 2017, states that no more than one event a day can go on. Neighbors, recipients, all interpreted that as a limit that no more. They have not read it as they can do one every day. And there was still a complaint generated on the site based on a failure to comply with the other conditions in that transfer. So while we maybe missed the boat to participate in that process, we have not failed to address concerns and specific site activities. Again, there's a stated, and they mentioned the process of getting the application for expansion of the bed and breakfast that had been, in fact, expanded some time ago. They've curtailed their activities. They need to do the same with regard to the event center conditional use permit in that there's clearly a plan to expand. Plus, they were in, out of compliance with regard to operating a full-service restaurant on the site. Applicants have submitted into the record comments that characterize the apparent, appellants and the formal complaint filed with the county as three disgruntled individuals objecting to Italian wines. And for that, I would refer you to the packet which has entitled Site Design Review 2018 VOC Packet on the top of it. Again, it took my computer 20 minutes to download the packet that the county submitted, so I did try to-
Excuse me, is that in this?
Yes, in the back. It's either the last or second to the last of the staple together.
Second to the last on mine.
Okay, I see it, sorry.
Yeah, thank you. Where it, it characterizes it just as our objections, as to the Italian part, frankly, I like Italian food. I will not patronize a restaurant on a farm, but it is, to say that it's a few disgruntled individuals is a misrepresentation of the issues of a full-service restaurant, open to the public, at regular hours, serving to order from a menu, food that's prepared onsite in a full commercial kitchen. Additionally, it housed onsite catering business, and the owner's website still offers onsite catering. So we, Friends of Yamhill County wishes the Pisoni's well in their move to Newburgh. I think they will be an asset to any urban downtown. And it's clear, they're popular, and their patrons thought highly of them. These are all good things in terms of building a restaurant business, but they are not relevant to a non-compliant use on a farm. And again, the issue can be made that these are not relevant, but they have raised these in their own testimony, and I think, again, the Docket C-20-17 needs to be revisited, especially in regards that it contradicts language in the permit that says there will not be events in the winery. In fact, the winery has approximately a 15,000 square foot footprint. The proposed building, I should say. This is the winery and tasting room space, approximately 5,000 square feet. This is the other, 10,000 square feet. They actively promote it in their own material as an event center, and I think we're setting ourselves up for future conflict if we do not have clear language addressing what is or isn't permitted use. The neighbors and Friends of Yamhill County remain concerned that what we are getting here is a 10,000 square foot event space that will operate 365 days of the year. Granted, they'll have to not have the tasting room open when they have their events, but either of them, the notion of 365 events a year, and now with a much larger physical footprint, is very concerning. Okay, I'm obviously wandering off here, but again, the issue of concern for future compliance, conditions need to be drafted in specific and concise language to make clear what is permitted and what is not on the site, property as a whole, as there's interpretations and vague information from the past. At the risk of reading too much into a picture, figure two on page eight of the staff report in the packet has an aerial photograph dated 12/8/2017. It shows the cherry orchard and a helicopter landing site. The cherry trees are gone, and I don't, I haven't seen a more current aerial to address the helicopter site, but we're concerned that the promulgation of this photograph and the reference to site conditions, this might be used at some time in the future for an owner to use a helicopter transportation there, unless it's expressly prohibited. With regard to the minutes of the Planning Commission meeting that are also in the packet, I estimate they're around pages 202 to 215, under section four. First, I would like to acknowledge that taking minutes is a thankless task, and I do not wish to cast aspersions on the person who did it. However, I'd like to address how my comments regarding water jurisdiction are summarized. At the November 1st meeting, Mr. Friday recapped the incident some years ago where the county, excuse me, drafted conditions for the design and engineering of a well. The state water authority rebuffed the county and asserted exclusive jurisdiction. This is frequently cited as the reason the county can't address water issues. During testimony on behalf of Friends of Yamhill County, I agreed that the technical aspects of well design and engineering are beyond the planner's skill sets and rightly belong with the state. I did not advocate, quote, "asking the county to supersede the state's role," end quote. Our position is that placing conditions on use of land based on technical data developed by the state's expertise is rightly in the domain of the county. Further, at the December 6th meeting, there was a discussion of the applicant's offer to provide water reports. This is not included in the final conditions out of concern that placing routine submission of water usage reports to the planning director was burdensome. It was asserted that the winery is at risk of being shut down in an enforcement action for forgetting to file the paperwork. This is not credible. Recent events in Carlton and our own experience prove that the enforcement process is very deliberate. There would be ample opportunity to correct the omission. Let's get back, I have reproduced, I thought, oh, I'm sorry, later on. Applicant asserts there are no standards for proportionality in square footage at the winery. And it's true, the winery addresses frequency events rather than square footage, where Yamhill County zoning ordinance 402.2E does speak to limiting non-processing square footage in crop processing facilities. However, there is a standard for the ratio of income derived from farm uses relative to non-farm use activity. Applicant provided, or offered to provide tax statements demonstrating the gross sales of incidental items or services. It was not included in the conditional approval by staff. Friends of Yamhill County requests that language be included on, as a condition of approval, requiring applicant to demonstrate compliance on an annual basis. Those calculations of sales of incidental items need to include all food and beverage, facility usage fees, items or services other than wine or crops produced on the property. There is no information in the record to support an expectation of significant farm income from this property in the near future. Facts are, grape harvest is three to five years out, cherry trees are gone, grass seed contract is ended, most of the grass fields have been tiled under, planted in grapes, and they do not have a water right to irrigate produce for market. The language proposed by staff in condition four needs to be strengthened and made clear to incorporate the other commercial and non-domestic water uses in the requested information. If the applicant specifies the winery as the single industrial or commercial use of the allowed 5,000 gallons, it needs to make clear that water is, that the water for the lodging, food service, and event center require a water right. This cannot be resolved by drilling additional wells. Joe Flom, Water Master, addressed this specifically in his comments to staff, as well as material that's been incorporated into the record. That's part of my share of the nearly 500 pages that the staff assembled for you. Specifically, applicant proposes acres of vineyard. I would just like to inform the applicant, a water right is required prior to diverting any water for commercial irrigation. Further, the use of well water up to 5,000 gallons per day for a single industrial or commercial development is exempt from needing a water right. If they need more than 5,000 gallons per day, they will need to obtain a water right. That is discussed, but I would also like to see the language proposed by staff in condition six strengthened and made clear to incorporate both the tasting room and waste stream from the winery operation, as well as the other uses onsite. Similarly, you know, they need to commit to what is the single industrial or commercial development that they will use for their exemption, and in, as there are more of them all relying on the same site. Again, you know, I would say we have two primary concerns here, is that the specific structure, it's, you know, horse is out of the barn, if you pardon the pun, construction is underway. That thing was taken, taken down to the slab and a little bit of wood months ago, months before any grapes were planted. But again, that's water under the bridge, we recognize issues related to the winery side of it. What we are concerned about is the other, and that the conditions, as they are outlined, do not adequately address the conflicting information in the owner and applicant's statements of intent and business plan, conditions as they are written, and representations that have been made in the public domain. We would like to see the issue of the event usage addressed upfront, rather than see neighbors and the rest of us stuck with trying to figure out and reconcile activities onsite with what is, has, or has not been approved. Again, hospitality industry is chipping away at land zone for productive farm use, and farm use means the current employment of land for the primary purpose of obtaining a profit in money by raising, harvesting, selling crops, or the feeding, breeding, management, and sale of, or the produce of livestock, poultry, for varying animals, or honeybees, or for dairy, and the sale of dairy product. Going back to the print of the information from their website, comments in areas highlighted by Friends of Yamhill County, it's all a very lovely pastoral picture of animals that do not appear to be managed for farm use. They may harvest eggs, chickens, some of those stuff for their own internal use, but I don't see the indication of a active farm for-profit usage here. Again, eventually, the wines will come to pass, but I'm deeply concerned that this is going to be a case of the tail wagging the dog down the road. The business owner, the owner's business plan and online information makes clear an intention to create a year-round event venue that is not limited to local wines or agritourism. And I quote, "Abbey Road Farms is the perfect place to host your next corporate retreat, ideal for off-site meetings, team bonding trips, sales incentives, and more." The comprehensive plan goal of protecting and preserving high-falorn land needs to take front and center when we're evaluating these sorts of sequential or cumulative applications. Resorts hiding behind a grape leaf belong within the purview of YC 00601 recreational commercial district and/or related commercial standards. This is also a matter of fairness in the competitive playing field for those like businesses who, whose operators are shouldering the responsibility of compliance, like pain system developments and other costs of interest, infrastructure inside the UGB. Friends of Yamhill County strongly oppose continued and expanding non-farm activities on this property and other EFU properties in the county. This application's and other pending for this site fail to meet the standards of Yamhill County zoning ordinance and Oregon state law. Thank you for the opportunity to comment on this. I anticipate there may need to be some future discussion relating to the issues of technicality. Again, Again, honest differences of opinion may exist. People may sincerely read language differently, but I believe in the overall goal of protecting farmland and being fair to other like events, this needs to be turned down. Any questions? No, thank you.
No, thank you.
Thanks, Susan.
Oh, I do.
Okay, Casey.
You, you mentioned in your testimony, which thank you for that, places where you'd like to see conditions of approval strengthened, and I wanted to make sure that we get that out there because I didn't, it wasn't clear to me, I was trying to write them down.
Okay.
And so I was like, if you have places where you are like, this is something we need to adjust, I'd love to hear that.
Okay. I, I got off my track.
I know there were some about the water.
Yeah. The ones that get specifically mentioned in the testimony, that as they are written, is number four.
Okay.
Which talks about they need to prove water supply.
Yeah.
And I feel that needs to address all usages on site.
With specifics for the single-use industrial, that thing.
Yeah. But also with their need to establish they have access to or a water right for firefighting. They also need to, if they're going to water produce, that's a separate issue.
Right.
So that it's, the water is all drawn from a single aquifer. They poked additional straws into it, but it's still.
The same place.
One domestic well. And so all of them need to be addressed in that, in my opinion.
Okay. Thank you for clarifying that. I thought I saw a firefighting retention pond or something like that on the site. Okay, there's a nod. So, at least that, one of those pieces seems to be addressed, but.
Yeah. There, applicants offered additional conditions.
Right.
But they did not get incorporated into it. And again, condition six having to do with septic and waste management.
Mm-hmm.
That needs to address tasting room waste stream, the other, the 12 bathrooms, and the commercial kitchen, as well as the other waste generating facilities on the site.
So like the, the waste water from processing, is that, is that something you would like to see in there, or?
Yeah, if, if they can come up with a system of beneficial reuse.
Yeah.
When you make wine, for every gallon of wine you make, you generate, you consume six gallons of water, and that's got to go someplace. Could be pretreated for reuse, but the only water that they're permitted to impound for this fire suppression pond.
Yeah.
Is off the roof and in pervious constructed surfaces.
Right.
Again, water is an extraordinarily complex issue.
Yeah. Thank you for, yeah. You still have to say it, even if I know it.
Yeah. The other condition is the, I would request that the one that the applicant proposed for water usage reports be in there as an enforceable action, that the offer of a tax return or tax, financial statement to address the 25% versus 75% farm income should be incorporated into there. I think those are, and I wouldn't mind saying they can't have a helicopter pad. Another issue we revisit periodically as a county. Just going over, once I go down the rabbit hole on this thing.
Understand.
It can be weeks until I'm seen again.
I've got like so many notes here, so I understand.
Again, I, I would not assign you this treatment of insomnia, but there's a lot of information in the staff packet.
Yeah, that's true.
Okay, is that, is that it, Catherine?
I think so.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I don't have any other cards, but does anybody want to speak in opposition to the application? Hearing none then, we'll move on to.
Thank you, Catherine.
Public agency, public agency reports.
Mr. Chair, our office sent referrals to the public agencies listed in the staff report. The planning department received a response from the county public works department, which found no conflicts with their interests. A comment was received from the Department of Water Resources stating that, and I quote, "The applicant proposes 15 acres of vineyard. I would just like to inform the applicant a water right is required prior to diverting any water for commercial irrigation. Further, the use of well water up to 5,000 gallons per day for single industrial or commercial development is exempt from needing a water right pursuant to ORS 537 sub 4545. If they need more than 5,000 gallons per day, they will need to obtain a water right." A comment was also received from the Carlton Fire District regarding the lack of reference to a water supply in the event of a fire, that improvements to the access road from Abbey Road may need to be improved, and that the height of the applicant's proposed winery and tasting room, as it relates to the Oregon Fire Code, some of those issues I think the applicant has subsequently followed up on.
And I'd like to maybe add something about the, and it'll take a minute or so, but the enforcement action that we took against the, the restaurant. We received a complaint in May that they were operating a restaurant and that it was a, you know, beyond what was approved. And at that time, my choices were that we could either cite them into circuit court or start the revocation process for their conditional use. Those are actions that I would do if the applicant failed to take any sort of corrective action. And I want to stress, those are things that we do towards the end of the process. I, I have the impression from things I've read from Friends and from testimony that Friends gave at the Planning Commission that they thought that was something we should do immediately. But both of those actions take a lot of time. Taking something in a circuit court is not something I want to do, it's something that we rarely do. And taking something before the board is only if, you know, we don't get any sort of And so, and also in thinking about this, I, you know, I'm looking at this and we've got a very successful restaurant that is operating in a location they're not supposed to be operating in, but it's a successful business. And I was trying to think of, you know, how are we going to, you know, try to see if there's a way to get them to move on to another location? And so, in, in doing this, I of course, you know, reached out to the owners of the property and their representatives and let them know that this is beyond what was approved. I did some further investigation and I wrote up an enforcement letter to them, sent them, asked them to please, you know, address this and see if there's any sort of way we could move this out of here. The deadline, you know, was for 30 days for them to respond. They actually called up and asked for a couple more days, and, and I gladly granted that. And I got the, their response back. I didn't quite agree with everything that they were saying, so we met together. They, I want to just say that, you know, I wish every enforcement went this way. It was a wonderful, very nice experience for me, especially with dealing with some of the other enforcements that we're dealing with. And they were very cooperative, they were very concerned about coming into compliance. They indicated that they had told the chefs that were leasing the space for the restaurant that they wouldn't extend the lease, they were looking for a new location. I was thrilled, I've read three articles now about them relocating into the city of Newburgh. I really was hoping that this restaurant would be able to relocate within the county. And I, as a little aside, I want to say that I also got three calls from people who were upset. One of them was a winery owner, and two of them were people that wanted to do, you know, events at this restaurant that wasn't going to exist anymore. And they were upset that we were doing enforcement on it, and why were we doing enforcement on this successful business? Why don't we try to accommodate it? So it's not just, you know, one side, you know, there, there are other sides to this. But I just want to say that, you know, it was a pleasure working with the Wilkins. They were very accommodating, very helpful in trying to resolve this issue. And they also have made the application for the bed and breakfast, for the additional rooms on the bed and breakfast. And they're doing their best, as far as I can tell, to come into compliance. And so, just want to give that as a little bit of an aside on, on how we do enforcement. That's it.
I think you can.
Thank you.
I think you can. Okay, any other public agency reports, answer that?
Yes, sir.
That's it? Okay, thank you. This is now time for rebuttal by the applicant.
Do you have any more papers?
No, I just have a few.
Because I have some here if you want.
There's some sitting down back there.
Yeah, that's what I thought, actually.
Look at the packet.
Yeah.
Yeah, look at the record.
I had to take two trips.
Wait, listen, you're not staying around.
Sorry.
No, it's okay. Elaine Albridge again for the record. I'll try to keep this short. This is a unique property, we acknowledge that. The Wilkins, my clients recognize that when they purchase it. It's, it's a very unique property, given the pre-existing land use approvals. And I, and I feel, and I think we've heard, that the Friends' appeal is really commingling the concerns regarding the pre-existing land use approvals, which allow overnight stays and a variety of events. We're very conscientious of the activities that are occurring on the property and looking at the cumulative operations. We do that just for our own best practices and business planning. The record reflects our discussion before the Planning Commission that looked at the water use for the property. We looked at not only the water use for the winery, including both wine production and the tasting room and the bathrooms, but we also looked at all the use on the property, the uses on the property to demonstrate how all the commercial activity was either, one, using water under the exemption, or two, we were going to pursue water rights. And so we are working with a consultant right now to prepare applications to the Oregon Water Resources Department for both storage, irrigation, and extra groundwater for, for taking care of the wine production, as well as irrigating the vineyards and the landscaping. So that will be a process, public process, that will be before the Oregon Water Resources Department. The record does contain some further detail, I actually had a slide, but I didn't put it in your handouts, about the breakdown of water usage and to the extent that we needed water and our permits had yet to be issued, that we would purchase water and truck it in as needed and store it on site, either, you know, in bladders or tanks, or have a truck come in, and you'll see on the site plan, we do have some storage accounted for for, for fire suppression water. Getting to the number, the concern about events and activities on the property associated with the winery, 215 452 sub part two is very clear that permitted use wineries have, are allowed an unlimited number of events and activities that are related to the sale and promotion of wine. And that, that's a privilege that the legislature decided was allowed for permitted use wineries that had 15 or more, more acres. There are mechanisms in place already in the Planning Commission decision that I think go to Friends' concerns to make sure that the county has a hook for compliance. And I'll point those out again, and we, I've touched on them briefly during my direct presentation, but, you know, conditions four and five relate to water, addressing both ensuring that we have enough water and we have legal water for the uses on the property, as well as the fire suppression we are required to coordinate with the Carlton Rural Fire Protection District on that, and provide evidence to the county prior to being issued building permits. So there's a timing hook there to ensure compliance. Condition nine is also very clear that agritourism or other commercial events associated with the winery are not allowed unless we follow up and file a winery permit application. So I feel like that's clear. And then 16 is what outlines the activities that are allowed under the permit, as well as it includes the compliance mechanism. That's, I call it the 25% threshold, to ensure that the activities that are not related directly to the sale and promotion of wine don't exceed 25%. And so that goes to kind of, you know, balancing the activities associated with the winery to ensure that the non-winery-related or more incidental activities don't supersede the actual winery objective of producing, selling, and promoting wine on site. So with that, you know, we have volunteered some conditions before, we volunteered on the water. We feel like we've been proactive in trying to comply. We're, you know, I represent the new owners in this unique property. We're excited about the opportunities associated with this property. Some of the marketing that you might see out there online is that we're drumming up interest to, for the, when the winery opens and, and getting the word out there. But I think, you know, my clients have taken a lot of time and energy and money into ensuring that their team is a good team and, and ready to move forward with these operations. So with that, I'll close unless there are any questions.
Casey, any questions?
Or it looks like.
No, go ahead.
Commissioner.
Go ahead, I have one for you, go ahead.
Mine's kind of long, so.
Okay, he's deferring view, Mary.
I have like the internet up here.
Question about the, your suggestions for sort of ramping up your water, your water supply accommodations. Is that something that you feel is, is really, it's realistic in terms of the amount of water that you would need to supplement?
In, in doing our water usage calculations?
No, and you talked about trucking in water.
Oh.
And, and to me, I'm just looking at just the realistic application of that.
Yeah.
I think that weighs heavily here.
I think the, the, one of the main reasons for that would be either to have the fire suppression water that we needed prior to building permits. So there's a timing associated with pulling building permits and needing that water. So that's possible, that's feasible.
Ongoing, though.
No, then, so that would be in order to pull building permits to satisfy the fire suppression water requirement. But the long-term plan is to have the fire suppression pond that's shown on the site plan, and that would be filled between a combination of, long-term is the collection of rainwater and stormwater to feed that pond, as well as filling it with groundwater, which would be done under a Oregon Water Resources permit.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Casey.
I was just, oh, yes.
Go ahead.
I told Director Family the other day that I am Casey, so you can call me Casey, too. Sorry.
Certainly, Commissioner.
I know that Director Friday and Joel Plon, the water master, are particularly interested in having data on groundwater, and especially in this area, which is home to Catherine as well, is that, these beautiful hills that are right there. And so I looked up, what do we have for monitoring wells? And we have almost no data from that area. And as a person who loves to know actually what's happening, it's just the conjecture of it, the only one I could find is kind of in your general neighborhood, and there's only seven, eight data points from it, and they present a startling image. You probably can't see this, but there's like, it's a, the year, 2004, there's a couple of data points of high static water levels, and then it really, it drops.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure, Catherine, if that's your experience with water, but I would love to hear your thoughts on working with water resources, since, and the owners are going to anyway, for a number of different projects about getting the well monitored by water resources, so we can all see it rather than it just being submitted to planning.
Right. So to respond, yeah, to respond to that, some of that data you may be looking for will be included in the Oregon Water Resources application packet.
Yeah.
Because we will be providing information about the onsite water supply.
Sure.
And well depth and.
Yeah, I mean, I can go look at that right now if I wanted to.
Pressure and all of that, yeah. Yeah, so, so that will be included. That's information, that's public, we're happy to share it with the county.
Mm-hmm.
You know, as for monitoring groundwater levels, that's not a requirement associated with the permitting.
Yep.
We'll be monitoring water usage, which we had talked about before the Planning Commission, and sharing, you know, the water use numbers.
Yes, and I recognize that it's not a requirement.
Mm-hmm.
But, and I know that we can just go on and look for your well log, and I'll know the pump tests, I'll know what the strata is.
Mm-hmm.
But to have an actively monitoring that we can all go to and look on, in that area, we don't have it really right now.
Yeah.
Yeah. Catherine?
Oh, sorry.
Wait, no, I can't X them.
Yeah.
Thank you, though.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I understand and appreciate your concern.
Yeah. But thank you for addressing it.
Yeah. At this point, I'd like to close, um, public testimony, if we can do that.
I was, I was gonna say, any other before we close? Any other questions? Nope. No questions? So that being said, we've had the rebuttal now and-
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I will, uh, ask for staff recommendation?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Uh, the applicant has demonstrated that they have at least fifteen acres of wine grapes planted on site, thereby satisfying the authorizing requirements outlined in sections four zero two, sub two, sub H, and four zero two, sub ten, sub I of the Yamhill County zoning ordinance, and ORS two one five, sub two, four five two, sub one, sub A. The applicant has addressed the site design review standards outlined in section one one zero one of the Yamhill County zoning ordinance. For these reasons, staff recommends approval of the applicant's proposed winery and tasting room with the conditions of approv- of approval as approved by the planning commission, which are in your packet. I would be happy to reread those if you'd like.
No, wait, one, read all sixteen of the, uh, you know, that's-
If you left out sixteen, we'd have a lot more time.
Yeah. So Casey, you don't have any?
No, I'm, I'm very comfortable with what I have read on the conditions.
It is actually seventeen.
It is seventeen, but sixteen's really long.
Yes.
That's probably why I didn't look at seventeen, yeah. Cause sixteen was so long. Okay, anything else on staff recommendation?
Yes, sir.
If none, then what I will do is I'll close the hearing and I'll bring it back around to the commission for deliberate, for deliberations, so.
So I'd like to make a motion at this time.
I guess we can do the council for deliberations. Can we make a motion for deliberations? Okay, go ahead.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to move that, uh, make a motion to affirm the planning commission's approval and staff's recommendation to approve with the conditions of approval as, as are written here.
Okay, thank you, Mary. And now we can bring any dis- any discussion? Casey?
Um, I, um, just wanted to put out there that, um, Sterling, uh, Wine Grape Services, is that Sterling Fox, um, did a great job in planting, um, as, as a very, very judgmental, uh, farmer, I, I thought that they did great. Um, and I noticed that, um, there's at least a hundred feet wide by a very long, I was told there's about twenty acres of grass seed that's still present on site. Um, I'm assuming it's going to be farmed because it is grass seed, and so I just wanted to put those two things out there. Um, yeah.
Okay, the only, the only comments I'll have is, uh, you know, I appreciate both the applicant and the, uh, the appellant still, and, and I think that, uh, Friends of Yamhill County made a lot of good points about the overall thing, but, uh, unfortunately, we're here to act only on the winery application and since there's actually requests for the other two, you know, even though I'd like to take those into consideration, at this time, I don't feel we can because those aren't part of the issue. So, uh, that's the only comments I have. So we have a motion by, uh, by Commissioner Sterrett that we uphold the planning commission's approval of the application. So all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, let it show that the commission unanimously, Commissioner Sterrett, Commissioner Kula, and Commissioner Olson, uh, voted to uphold the decision of the planning commission. So thank, thank you, everyone.
Yep.
Okay, now we have the public, public hearing done, is it time for announcements? Do we have any announcements?
Mr. Chair, I'd just like to mention that, uh, as a board member at YCAP, um, we have, uh, discussed the, um, situation at FCI in Sheridan and, uh, the food bank, the food truck will be bringing out food and making some deliveries, um, to employees who are affected by the government shutdown at FCI, and that's going to be a couple of times a week. And the other thing is, is the situation on Dustin Court, as many of you know, has gotten to epic proportions in terms of, uh, levels of dangerousness, uh, trash, rodent, public health issues, uh, uh, it, it's a significant problem, it's affecting staff, it's affecting our ability to find an executive director, and, um, we're just hopeful, I know that, uh, board members and staff are at the point where they're demoralized and actually we're facing some concerns about people who might not want to, um, to continue to, uh, to work there anymore. And it also affects YCAP's mission of, of helping people who are looking for, uh, to be self-sustaining. So I just want to let you know that it is a significant problem and I hope that this is addressed soon because it's now, um, it's now reached the point of, uh, critical mass.
I, I have just one question for you on that, Mary, thank you for, for the compliments. Um, as I look at a lot of other around the state, the Northwest, a lot of other community action program, programs, it seems like a lot of times the director or the exec director have people that are actually good and leading, uh, with the knowledge of providing solutions for homeless. Is that one of the criteria for the, for the sector of YCAP?
So, uh, in, in answer to your question, the current mission and the current program that, the current programs at YCAP have, uh, have, um, shelter and, and ongoing, all of the services that you would need to find somebody, a home or, or placements. The, uh, there have been some placements made, the majority of the people there are not interested in, in that, those services, but, uh, there's a binder kept on everybody who is on Dustin Court with an effort toward reaching out to them and offering them services and working, uh, staff has been, have been stymied in their efforts in that they really are not, uh, taking advantage of the services offered. So in, in answer to your question, it isn't that the services are lacking to reach out, is that they are not, um, they're not being accepted. But in answer to your question about the executive director search, all of the people who are, have applied for this have an air, have in their repertoire, uh, the ability or some history in some of those social services that are implicated here.
Okay, I think that's, that's the only question I have. Casey, any announcements?
Um, discussion of present and impending need for help for federal workers, um, so I'm, I was glad that, that, that came up, uh, and I'm wondering whether we want to start finding out from our directors in the county, um, how we can, um, the services that we offer, how we can help them. But, so that's for another day, but I wanted to bring it up as well, cause I feel like it's real important. But you have a- Okay. So thank you for following.
Anything else, Casey?
That's it.
The only thing I have bring up, found out yesterday afternoon, I was given these and I will bring it up Tuesday at our next work session, informal session, is that Sedcor, I thought we would all be interested, Sedcor is having two egg breakfasts, one in Marion County on Wednesday, February twentieth from seven thirty to nine thirty, and one in Polk and Yamhill County Wednesday, February twenty-seventh, the next week, from seven thirty to nine thirty. And these are going to be on water and the impact of water reallocation of the, um, on the agricultural industry, so I'll make sure everybody gets information on this, cause I don't know if you got it. And, uh, I think that it's something that we'll discuss a little bit more on Tuesday, cause I think there's a chance, how we all feel about water for Yamhill County really to get involved in this, but I would encourage, uh, that's what we talk about, to look at going to this and learning more about, more about water that's happening in the state.
Thank you.
So, and that's the only announcement I have. Okay, do we, being that we don't have any other announce- announcements, then, uh, I will go ahead and I will adjourn the meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you.